Usually Justin does the intros, but today Justin's not here. He's been replaced with this devilishly handsome gentleman, Brad Bradford. So, welcome to Make Money Count. We're gonna talk about the city a little bit today.
Sure.
I'm so happy that you came on. This is great.
Thrilled to be, we're out in the West End. We're Gladstone area for folks, just to give you a geographic orientation. And whenever I kind of traverse west of Yong, west of the Dawn, I gotta get you to stamp my passport. So, we're not quite out in the great state of Etobicoke, but it is nice to be here with you in the studio today.
We typically don't release the location because we have so many fans that
Don't want them beating down the door.
Yeah, exactly.
Fair enough. Okay.
But, uh, thank you, fans. Um, so the first thing I started looking at, I was like, I wanted to read a little bit more about you. We know each other pretty well now. I've been for dinner a couple of times. Brad is a fabulous guy. Um, I tried to find a picture of you with hair.
Right.
Couldn't do it.
Not available.
Yeah, but if we can find one, we'll put it up here.
Yeah, we could probably, yeah, we'll probably supply something in for you.
You have done such a great job in the last year, year and a half of ha- holding the city accountable. And I keep thinking to myself, like, that can't be an easy job, right? Like, every time I see you, you've got five different things going on and you're running from meeting to meeting. But you're like, the city government doesn't really operate the same way as like the federal government or the provincial government. And it, it, it's kind of like, there's no opposition.
Right.
So, how have you found that role? Like, how have you kind of grown into that role?
Yeah, for context, I was elected in 2018. Uh, you know, I worked quite closely with our former mayor and um, my background's in urban planning. So, I'd worked in the private sector. I'd worked on transit projects across the country and eventually I found my way to the city of Toronto and I landed in the chief planner's office. And that was my first exposure to local government. Uh, and it, and it can be a bit of a quagmire. It was the first time I saw politics. It was the first time I saw big bureaucracy and I was there for, you know, a couple of years. And when 2018 came around, as a, as a frustrated uh, middle management guy with no direct reports, think about how bureaucratic that is for a second, uh, I, I said, you know what? This is not the, the best way for me to create the type of change I want to see in the city. Uh, so I put my hand up, ran for council. That's a whole separate podcast, uh, cause I, I was so naive about politics and really had no idea what I was doing. The only two political people I knew both told me, you know, save, save your time and your money. Don't run for council.
2018, is that when you first ran?
Yeah, so, uh, but we were able to sort of overcome the odds and it was a surprise win for a lot of people. Uh, and, and I found myself in this role as a city councillor in Toronto. Our wards, uh, which is like the ridings are certainly um, a lot different than other jurisdictions. I represent a hundred and twenty thousand people in Beaches, East York. So, that's bigger than like ninety-eight percent of municipalities across the country. Yeah, and uh, and that's because we have the equivalent of twenty-five federal ridings here in city of Toronto. So, wards doubled in 2018. The provincial government decided to um, move council from forty-four seats to twenty-five. So, all that is, it was a steep learning curve and I thought I understood the city of Toronto from a bureaucracy side because that was my experience and I did, but you get in there in, in the political world and it's quite a bit different. It's also different, as you pointed out, than, you know, working in a party system, federal or provincial government. Um, there's not formal parties, but we can talk a little bit about the dynamics and how that's changed. Uh, and you also work with the civil service um, to a much closer degree. Uh, we're working on development applications. We're working on secondary plans. We're working on, you know, uh, approaches to dealing with fireworks on the waterfront on, on holidays. Um, it's hand and glove and you're sitting around the table, rolling up your sleeves, trying to solve the issues that face your uh, your neighborhood and your community on a day-to-day basis. Um, and if you're at a provincial or a federal level, the only person that's dealing with the bureaucracy is typically the minister, uh, the minister's staff. So, if you're a backbencher or you're in opposition, that interface with the bureaucracy is very limited. Uh, and that's why I like local government because, you know, as interesting as Arctic sovereignty is as a, as an issue and
Becoming more interesting now.
I was gonna say, certainly more relevant today than it, you know, has been for a long time, but it's pretty removed from our day-to-day lives. Um, even if people don't understand the issues in the local government, they care about housing and affordability. They care about transit reliability. They care about gridlock. They care about their mom and pops on the main streets. Uh, they care about the fact that it feels like the Hunger Games every time you try and register your kid for swimming lessons. So, these are all local issues and I don't, I, you know, I can't really think of a better position to create impact and, and change than being a local councillor in Toronto. So, uh, it's been good. But my role has changed post uh, mayoral by-election in twenty twenty-three. There's a new administration with a different approach uh, to how we do things at city government. And my role has sort of evolved as someone who, as you said, is, you know, fighting for accountability and results, value for money. Um, I don't see enough of that from the current administration and so I use my platform and my position to speak up and, and try and push for something better.
Is it just me or do you notice that you're getting more support within council? And I mean broadly speaking, I think it's kind of like uh, cart before the horse. Like, when counts, when other council members start seeing that what you're saying is resonating with Torontonians, you start getting a little more support? Or does it feel like that? Maybe it doesn't feel like that if you're the bill of it.
Well, you know what? It's, I have learned a lot over the past, let's call it, you know, twenty months. And uh, you can't let defeat define you and there's always lots of lessons to be learned when you lose. And so, coming out of that mayoral by-election, you know, myself and a hundred and one other candidates were unsuccessful. There can only be one winner. Uh, that's Mayor Chow.
There were a hundred and two candidates?
Yeah, that's right. So, you know, it was, it was a crowded ticket. You, you pulled it out. It was like opening up a tabloid spread or something on your, on your ballot card. But uh, yeah, like it's um, I spent a lot of time listening to people. I spent a lot of time in Etobicoke and North York and Scarborough uh, and hearing from everyday Torontonians, their hopes, their aspirations, their dreams, their frustrations. Uh, and they don't necessarily see themselves represented um, at city hall. And it is such an echo chamber down there. And if you spend too much time in the clamshell, um, listening to yourself and all of these sort of self-congratulatory speeches, you really become detached from, I think, what's going on in the streets. And, you know, Toronto is such an incredible place to live, to raise a family, to build a business. That's what we want, the idea of Toronto. And we'll probably talk about some of the frustrations and challenges, but the fact remains, um, we have a housing crisis in part because so many people want to be here. They want to be here. They want to bring their time and their talent and their treasure and, and build something here. But I think the current administration and, and you know what, even before that, it feels like we're resting on our laurels. It's this idea that the, the prologue of the past twenty years is somehow going to write the future for the city. And if we can't address the fundamentals, if we can't get the basics right, if we can't create an environment where we can compete with other cities, because that's what we're doing. We're trying to compete for, for that talent and for those investments and those dollars. Um, then, you know, our future success and prosperity uh, will be compromised.
It kind of parallels Canada in general. I find, we did this podcast a while ago where I was talking about how Canada is like this grand dam hotel, right? Like Grand Dame Hotel with like a wonderful reputation and like stories about how amazing it was that one time someone stayed there. As a reputation for people around the world who aspire to a better life and freedom and fairness. And we brought in so many people and put such a strain on our infrastructure, on our systems, that we eroded the very fabric of this, this special thing that we have.
Yeah.
And now we're seeing outflows, both from Toronto and from Canada in general.
There, it's a huge, it's a huge problem. I, I had a conversation with the franchisee owner of Second Cup somewhere south of Aglington Young Street and uh, he had said to me, he, he bought the franchise a couple of years ago. He's from India. He's an engineer. Uh, and he came to Canada ten or twelve years ago.
He didn't really drink coffee to identify that second.
Well, hey, well, we're gonna talk a lot about supporting Canada right now, Canadian, that's the Second Cup. But, but uh, he bought this franchise a few years back. He'd been here for a decade in this country and it was of course predicated on the promise of a better life and better future for his family. Uh, and he is seriously considering getting out of it and moving back to India. And his brother had already done that a year ago. So, I think when you look at the data from like Toronto Regional Board of Trade, they will point out fifty thousand people left the city of Toronto. Uh, you know, over the past year and that for me is a big risk to the city because those are the folks that, you know, they might make a decent living. They certainly don't qualify for any subsidies or supports because of, you know, their paycheck, but they don't make enough to afford to live here. So.
And that's who's getting killed. Like with the budget, with property tax increases, that middle class, we're killing them.
They're, they're getting absolutely slammed and it's, and people are, are voting with their feet. They're leaving. It's a flight for affordability into the GTA, interprovincial migration, people moving out to Alberta. They've done a much better job at, you know, bringing on housing supply in their pipeline and getting shovels in the ground. People are moving out there. People are moving south of the border. And I think, you know, the broader mentality, the politics here in this country, certainly in this city, we've lost that competitive edge. We are resting on our laurels. We're just assuming that uh, we've got a good thing going on and it's gonna be that way forever. Um, but meanwhile, you look at other jurisdictions within this country, um, or certainly south of the border and they're competing and they're trying new things. They are not afraid of change and they recognize that change is, is gonna be the model on a go-forward basis and they're embracing it. And I, you know, I continue to hear from people who wanted to be in Toronto. They really do. And that's, that's kind of the positive. They want to be here, but it, it just didn't work for them financially. Uh, they felt less safe. It was too difficult to get around. It's too hard to raise a family. And so, if we can't create the conditions where people can build something, where they can employ people, where they can make contributions to our GDP and our productivity and our tax base. Uh, if they're doing that somewhere else, that means we're losing and we don't want to be losers.
What do you do? We're at a kind of critical point, right? What do you do if you become the mayor of the city to create a more fertile ground for the type of success we're looking for? Like, what do you think, like fundamentally, everyone's got an idea, right? Like for what the kind of most critical pieces are, but like what, what are the, what are the pieces that you think this requires?
Housing's the biggest thing and we can get into that. Um, I also think mobility, congestion, reliability of transit. Those are table stakes for a functional city. Uh, and then I put safety right there. So, you know, housing, mobility, safety. These are the basics that we are failing on across the board right now. I, we can get into a lot of concrete things that we can do about that. But thematically, for anyone who's leading a big city like Toronto, for anyone who's involved in government, I think we have to flip the bit. I think that we have to recognize that governments have become so bureaucratic, so bloated, so consumed with, with regulating, with the default position of no to everything. It has stifled the type of competition and creativity that unlocks both opportunities, uh, capital, innovation to solve the problems that are in front of us.
How do you do that?
So, how
In a city with like, like, are you, you gotta be like, introduce some like Doge type system? Like, there's so many
Yeah, like obviously
inherent within that system, right?
I think you need strong leadership that's not afraid to try something new. And the pathway forward is not doing incremental iterations of the same shit that we've been doing for the past ten, fifteen, twenty years. That's actually what got us into this mess.
Kind of like this budget that just came out.
Yeah, well, yeah, we get, we'll get into the budget. Um, this is a great segue. But I, to put a pin in it, I would say like, you know, the folks who have aided and abetted or been complicit in getting us to this moment are not the people that are going to fix it. And there is a lot of value in continuity for sure, but there's also a lot of value in outside perspectives, a fresh set of eyes, a different approach. And, you know, we have to move away from the idea that government has to be the answer to everything. Um, no, actually like less government, more collaboration, more partnership. Um, that is the only way that we're gonna be able to deal with the challenges in front of us. We're going through a, a moment of exponential change. You look at how AI is going to reshape everything from building and housing to dealing with problems like traffic and congestion, to optimizing travel patterns, to optimizing budgets. And the bureaucracy and the city and the civil service is not remotely equipped to be able to deal with that or better yet, leverage and embrace that. So, we need people in the orbit of city hall that understand that at a degree far beyond you or I. But we have such a culture of fear and risk aversion at the city of Toronto and again, the default position of no. Uh, we need to stand up a culture where we wanna, we wanna be first in something instead of always waiting for someone else to do it. Like, let's take on these challenges with the sort of, you know, courage and, and bravery that will allow us to be, you know, pioneers and have cities around the world point to Toronto and say, oh, like, yeah, we want to be like those guys. Right now, no one's looking at Toronto and saying, we want to replicate that. They're, they're looking at us and saying, oh, we're one of the most expensive cities in the country, the most congested on the continent and a city that is increasingly less and less safe. That's not where we want to be.
Yeah, the, the budget thing, if we want to chat about it a little bit. So, I was immediately taken aback when property taxes increased by almost seven percent.
Yep.
And it wasn't like, it was like uh, one point five percent was for, like, how does it work? One point five percent was allocated to something specific?
It's all your tax bill, but it's, it's, yeah, there's one point five, which is the city building fund, which is supposed to be for infrastructure that enables transit and housing. Nice idea. Um, in twenty eighteen though, the province uploaded capital expansion of transit. So, we don't actually do that anymore at the city of Toronto. All the transit projects that you're seeing right now are being driven for and paid for by the province, which actually, there's a lot of validity to that. And then the housing and infrastructure that enables housing um, makes sense, except that our reserve accounts are full of billions of dollars, thirty-plus billion in different reserves. Cause we, we take the money from you, but then we don't spend it. And while we don't spend it, costs continue to go up with inflation. And so, we will have dollar lines committed to certain values uh, that far, uh, far in excess of what we actually have collected because our procurement process is so slow and cumbersome. It takes us literally years to get the dollars out the door.
I was, so there was a really good article, Austin, you can pull it up, uh, in the Globe recently, maybe a day or two ago. And it kind of shed a little bit of light. It was an opinion piece. I don't know if you saw this. And it shed a little bit of light on the budget. The title was, "Toronto's Budget Is An Opaque Mess That Almost No One Understands."
That's a, yeah, I, and it's funny, like, so I haven't read that, but that is um, the authors of the um, of the article don't write the headlines. That's the editors, but that was obviously the editor's take when they took a look at the article. And, and I think that's a pretty apt description. Um, it's always aggregated in big numbers. We never look at anything line by line.
So, that's, so a few things here that come, like, as a guy that looks at financial statements.
Right.
Why does the city of Toronto decide to structure it differently from everybody else?
Every other municipality.
Right.
Or the province or the feds.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's, it's smoke and mirrors and it is so big and unwieldy. And now with, you know, uh, the strong mayor powers, which changed a few years ago, uh, we don't, as councillors, as elected officials,
Yeah, no doubt.
Twenty-five individuals representing a hundred and twenty thousand people a pop, uh, we have no ability to shape uh, that budget process. And so, what we end up voting on, it's a really sort of bizarre thing. The actual vote on whether or not I support this budget is me voting to either direct the staff or not direct the staff to implement the rate, the six point nine percent tax increase or not. And so, if I say, "Don't implement that six point nine percent rate", which is how I will vote, because I will not support this budget, that's effectively me saying I don't support the budget. But even trying to explain that, like, you know, right now on the podcast, like, it's, it's not intuitive.
Yeah.
It's not an up-down yes-no on the budget.
Yeah.
It's not line item by line item, saying, "Let's prioritize this. Let's fund this. Let's not do that." It's none of that. It's just this big omnibus.
Is there a surplus?
There's lots of surplus. There's tens of billions of surplus.
There's an annual surplus, but we appear as though it's like, we talk about it like they're in a deficit.
Right.
And then the other thing I found really interesting was that when you book, yeah, you, when the city of Toronto books capital expenditures for like a project that has a, a, a period of time.
Yeah.
They book it immediately.
Right.
Like a, like a streetcar or a, like, it's like they spent it right away.
Yeah, and then if you look at our spend rates, like, there are different divisions and different projects uh, that will have like a forty percent, fifty percent spend rate, you know? So, we're taking your money today.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and then we don't spend it and then we lament about the state of decline in the city and things are getting worse or we don't have the infrastructure to enable the housing or we don't have the transit to move the people. Uh, and so, it's, it's a pretty backwards process. It gets into issues with procurement. Um, the fact that, you know, it would be my view, based on my experience, the folks that are involved in this stuff don't necessarily have the, the insights or the industry experience to know how long the projects are gonna take. Um, or how much they're gonna cost. And so, anyone that's on the development side of things, like, you live or die, uh, your project performer on having accurate estimates. And you build into contingency, of course, and, but you have to be very sober about the timelines and the costs. City of Toronto is not that and um, you know, when projects are delayed because they don't get to market fast enough or we have made it so difficult to bid on projects, we don't have any bidders, like that happens. You have to ask the question, why does nobody want to work with the city of Toronto? Well, I can give you a million reasons for that, but I could tell you, like municipalities in the nine oh five don't have any trouble getting vendors to bid on roadwork or civil work. They've got tons. The city of Toronto, nobody wants to do business with us. We take too long to pay. It's too difficult to get here. Uh, you're basically buying the job with a lowest bidder procurement model. Uh, then we're gonna end up suing each other at the, at the end of the project anyways.
Wow, it sounds delightful.
Yeah, yeah. So, big surprise, nobody bids on the work. Um, and so there, you know, fixing that stuff, that's why I go back to what I was saying off the top, like, you have to bring in outside perspective and expertise. You have to have a fresh set of eyes, the people that have been involved doing this for the past ten, fifteen years. If you held your, held the pen on the policy as a human, it's very hard to objectively say, you know, that might have been the right thing twenty years ago, but that doesn't work today. And with the exponential change that's happening all around us and certainly in the, the days, weeks, months, years ahead, um, you have to have people who are not afraid of that, but actually want to embrace it. So, our budget process is opaque. Um, you know, the line item numbers, top line numbers are terrifying.
Big numbers.
They're big numbers and, you know, it's, it's the, it's a budget that's bigger than like five provinces in the country of Canada. It's eighteen point eight billion dollars for our operating for this year alone. That is a one and a half billion dollar increase over last year. Okay?
A lot of collective bargaining happening.
Lot of collective bargaining. We've signed some of the most expensive lucrative, uh, you know, collective bargaining agreements in the history of the city, but you look at the one that we signed with transit workers. Um, it's the most expensive collective bargaining agreement in transit agency history on the continent.
They must have had a really good negotiator.
They had a great negotiator, uh, you know, a tip of the cap to them, I suppose. Uh, and I think the mayor was quite happy to, to sign those deals. Uh, we did another one with the outside workers. We're doing another one with the inside workers right now. So, these are uh, financial obligations that we
I saw this before. I saw this movie once before. You know when I saw it? In Greece.
Okay.
So, Greece, the, the way politics worked for quite some time in Greece were when a party comes into power, everyone that has helped the party get into power gets jobs. And they bloat the system
Right.
with such bureaucracy and then they overpay all of these people. And eventually, there isn't enough revenue to pay the people. But it's this game to bring people in to continue to support yourself and continue to get lots of votes. And it never ends well.
Well, it doesn't end well for taxpayers and it doesn't end well for the economy. It doesn't end well for the people, right? Um, you can only do that so much. And yes, like, did these unions back the current administration in the last election? You betcha. They went to the wall. And immediately we saw a bunch of new jobs created. Um, a great example is we now have two hundred information agents at the subway stations, two hundred new full-time jobs. And, you know, this is a TTC that is less reliable than it's ever been. Uh, it's a TTC that's less safe than it's ever been. It's a TTC that is hemorrhaging a hundred and forty million dollars, one hundred and forty million dollars a year on fare evasion alone. Do these two hundred people deal with safety?
No.
Do they deal with fare evasion? No, they are effectively uh, kind of in a Walmart greeter capacity when you walk into the subway station. Yeah, it's all very nice and, but, but again, like, if we are an administration that is concerned about prioritization of scarce uh, public dollars and resources and an administration that would be concerned, uh, concerned in prioritizing value and results, that's not how you get it. You know, there's um, this year's budget includes an expansion of library hours. Well, that's great. Like, we can all get on board with that. I have a four-year-old and I have a nineteen-month-old and so I'm spending more time in the library than I have over the past thirty years. Uh, and it's great. But we took the most expensive way possible to increase library hours by um, effectively increasing them unilaterally across the board. Well, we have a lot of libraries in the city and some of them are very busy. Some of them though, the only people that are in the building on a day-to-day basis is the staff. And so, a more practical approach might have been to look at the data, the evidence and say, well, this library here in Etobicoke is super busy, so we're gonna increase the hours and the staff allocation and the service level at that one. But this one up at Pape has six people working there and they're the only people that are in the building on a day-to-day basis. So, maybe we don't increase the service level there. But we didn't do that. We just did a blanket it across the board. The other piece is the collective bargaining agreement on that um, ensures that anyone working on a Sunday, we just introduced Sunday hours, gets time and a half. So, it could be your very first shift of the week, but you're getting time and a half because it's a Sunday. And so, we have now committed to increasing the service levels in literally the most expensive way possible. And I don't know if that's the, the best use of our taxpayer dollars. I don't know if that's the best approach. Even if you wanted to have the outcome of, let's increase service levels at the library, there's, there might be good reasons to do that. How we did it though, was uh, was a very expensive way of going about it. And, and of course, Toronto Public Library uh, Union was a big backer and supporter of the mayor.
I would think that spending money on, like, maybe putting some more people in the building permits department or in uh, maybe in emergency services, right? Like, things that are, that the city desperately needs, like, would make a lot more sense.
Yeah, like another example, we're spending millions of dollars on standing up a, a new breakfast program in schools for, for kids. And again, you know, I'm getting beat up by, by the left wing of council now as if I'm some heartless person uh, who doesn't have kids or understand this. The evidence would show like full bellies, uh, kids perform better in school and everything. And I agree with that, but
Intermittent passing doesn't work for me.
It's not so, it's not so great, but in a world with limited resources, you gotta stay in your lane. Why is the city of Toronto delivering a breakfast program in public schools in the education system that is funded, owned, operated by the province? Why are we doing that? We should, the mayor should use her bully pulpit, her podium, her platform to push the province to do that, to, to fund that if we believe that that is an important thing to do. But instead of making any effort, any advocacy push, uh, any noise about that, even asking the province to do it, we just immediately put up our hand and say, "Yeah, city of Toronto will do it." And that's, and that's how, you know, we try and be all things to all people. And you end up doing everything poorly, I would say, like the, the city of Toronto operates at like a C minus level. And, and you feel it when you call nine-one-one in an emergency and you're put on hold. You feel it when you're at the, you know, the hockey rink Friday night and somebody has a pretty catastrophic injury and it takes an hour for an ambulance to get there. Um, you see the disrepair in the parks, um, when you can't get your daughter into swimming lessons. Like, these are sort of fundamental things that the city of Toronto, uh, roadkill removal, pothole filling, uh, a subway that actually shows up on time and doesn't break down and kick you off the subway when you're trying to, trying to get to work.
Listen, the emergency services
Yeah.
are hairs on fire.
Yeah.
We got a real serious problem. We're not a world-class city until we can fix that.
Well, it's, it's
Leaving raccoons on the side of the road for a week?
Yeah, well, sometimes it's five weeks.
Yeah, like, what, like, how is that even possible, right?
Yeah, it's, and, and it is. It's because despite having an eighteen point eight billion dollar budget, we don't have a culture of performance or accountability. The auditor general released a scathing report this summer that found our park staff are only in the parks fif- fifty-two percent of the time.
Yeah.
Um, and the rest of the time, they're, you know, in strip malls and, and coffee shops. And we know that because we've got GPS in the trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know where the cars are and then you go into the parks and you see things look a little bit shabby. Um, the mayor promised everybody better services for what she called was a modest tax increase. It turns out it was a record-breaking tax increase, but either way, we were promised better services. And there were people out there that would say, "Okay, like, you can increase my property taxes, but I want to see value for money." Well, when these auditor general reports Well, when these auditor general reports come out, show that people are only doing the job fifty-two percent of the time that they're getting a hundred percent of the paycheck for. They're rightly frustrated.
And you can't get rid of these people.
Well, it's
Sorry if you work in the parks.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's like you gotta do the job, right? And that's what I mean. Like, I don't think it's about getting rid of people. I think it's about how do we get the performance that you're getting paid to do, like, and, and that's a culture thing. It's an accountability thing and there's zero. Like that's, that's a zero. And so what would be a response in this year's budget with respect to this new information that we have? Well, the mayor is hiring a hundred and twenty-two more people to work in the parks. And then next year, the hiring plan is for another hundred and sixty. Like, don't you think before you would increase the bureaucracy, before you would increase the size of the public sector? You might say, maybe we don't need to hire as many people if we just get the people that we already have doing the work that they're getting paid to do. Wouldn't that be where you would start? And yet like this budget, it's a hundred and twenty-two new full-time staff to go in the parks. And so this is, this is the role I play where I'm looking at that stuff and I'm, I'm trying to, to talk about it, to raise these issues so that
I feel like you need somebody else, though.
Well, so like as, as Torontonians that we can demand better from our elected officials and that's what elections are for and that's where we're headed uh, in twenty twenty-six. But yeah, these are, you know, I think politicians in general bank on the fact that people aren't paying attention, that they're asleep at the switch, they feel the frustrations, but uh, you know, as that Globe and Mail article describes, it's so opaque and cumbersome and difficult to understand and you've got so much going on in your life. You, you know, you end up giving the politicians a pass, but you really ought not to because you're paying for it. And we pay for it in quality of life. You pay for it with your tax bill. You pay for it in your ability to build a business and, and create jobs and prosperity. All these things are more difficult when you have a less competent, less effective government. And that's what we have in the city of Toronto right now.
If I was starting now, like my business,
Right.
I wouldn't do it here.
And that's killer, right? Like that's, that's not what we want.
Yeah.
But I hear that all the time. I, I hear people that are pushing to different markets. And again, the, uh, across the greater Toronto area uh, or different provinces, you know, people who are coming out of school, getting trained in our fantastic institutions here in Toronto, Toronto region.
We lose them.
Yeah, we lose them. We lose them to the states. Uh, we lose them to Alberta and no one's asking the question, why? And as a local government, we need to be seized with delivering the basics, basic level of functionality. So that people can have a, a reasonable expectation around safety and quality of life and affordability. But why are grads from U of T going to different markets? Why are they taking their uh, intellectual property and leveraging that and partnering with other, other people, other jurisdictions, other businesses, rather than growing it here in the city? And for a variety of reasons, quality of life related as, you know, as far as local government goes, but also tax policies here in this country. They're going elsewhere because it's such a big risk, right? When you're, when you're a small business, when you're an entrepreneur, you're betting on yourself and it's a big risk. And if, you know, you get to the end of it, whether it's a development project or trying to build a business and ten years down the road, you, you go to to sell and to monetize that, if sixty percent of that is going to be taken away from you, you know, you're, you're not going to do it. You're going to try and get a job with the government, something with more security and better benefits and less risk. And that's the problem is like the country now is twenty percent civil servants.
At the library on Sundays.
Yeah, well, and, and, and it just, it just means that we don't understand the problems that people are facing because they're insulated from that. And we don't have that competitive entrepreneurial spirit that was the backbone of success in this country. That's slipped away. And so if we're not a country or a city that is seized with, with growth and competition and innovating, trying to create new things. If we're just trying to further divide up the same-sized pie over and over again, we're, we all are left with less. And then the programs, the breakfast programs and the library hours or all the things that we want to do, you don't have the money to pay for it. And that's, that's a bit of a spiral.
For sure, more focus is coming on to the city now. I think like we've got to get through a federal election. We've got a provincial election that Doug's got in the bag. And then I think you're gonna see far more attention focused on the municipal problems, the city government problems that we, we have. And I think like to your point, the, the reason, like there is no, like no one's looking to identify the problems. They're like, we're just kind of like papering over them and smiling about it. And even like some of the petty stuff that's going on, like this is the other thing I wanted to bring up. So like you studied urban planning, right?
Right, yep. Yep, that, we're both urban planners. It's my profession, private sector, public sector. Worked at the city of Toronto in planning.
His wife's way cooler than him, by the way.
Way better.
Put me onto that Below Deck show, which is hilarious. But what, like, here's where I want to go with this. You're a very intelligent guy. You know a lot about how cities function and how they should grow. Like I, I told you, I listened to a couple of your podcasts where you're talking about this kind of like softer density.
Gentle density.
Yeah, um, like fourplexes and like introducing more kind of livable, sustainable growth into areas.
More types of housing in more areas.
Yeah, but like you're a guy who not just knows about it, but who is genuinely passionate about it.
Sure, yeah.
And at the start of this administration, you, you get, you were already on the housing committee.
Yeah, I think I know where you're going with this.
You're the vice chair of the housing committee. You get start, like something I know you're passionate about.
Yeah.
Uh, as if you don't have enough stuff going on. And I, it's your, it was you and Gord Perks.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Who is kind of maybe a little more on the other side.
Way over there.
Which, which is a good thing, right?
That's democracy.
Put two people together that have opposing views and have them co-chair. I was like, I thought that was really great.
Yep.
But at a certain point, you're no longer good enough to do that job.
Well, so
What happened?
For, for listeners, uh, I used to be the chair of planning and housing. And then, and then Olivia Chow comes in to administration and I'm, uh, you know, put in the vice chair spot. And that's fine because your chairs at city hall, um, back to the differences between province.
That's like being a minister.
It's like being the minister. Yeah. So, uh, the old administration, I was the chair of planning and housing, you know, um, I'd say I have the background to, to be well-suited to that position. Uh, and the ambition and I think almost a generational perspective, like I see it as, you know, nineteen eighty-six model, it's, it's this generation of people who are getting effed and pushed out of the city. They don't have the same opportunities that their parents did. This is the first generation where, you know, statistically, people are doing worse than the generation that, that came before them. So it is a personal thing and I am passionate about it. She kept me in the vice chair, brought in Gord Perks, uh, councillor for Parkdale High Park, uh, who has a very different philosophical approach, a very ideologically driven approach.
Still a good guy. Like I met him at this, he does like this Halloween, like they do like near my place. They have like these pumpkin, you bring your pumpkin.
Pumpkin parades, yeah.
And I see him there and he's a nice guy.
Yeah, but yeah.
I don't have the same views as he does.
I don't know if I'd like, and you know, if Gord ever hears this, I don't know if he would describe himself as a nice guy, but he's a smart guy. Uh, I'll give him that and he's a passionate guy and he's got his views and his views are very different than mine. And again, that's democracy. But he is a believer in massive government intervention. He is a big believer in socialism. Uh, the government is the answer to the problems. Capitalism is the enemy. And you know, this is where we are now entering an era with the Chow administration of the public builder. Uh, so she has effectively created more bureaucracy to build more housing. And if it, if it translates to any units of housing, it will be the most expensive affordable housing in the history of the country. So it's a bit of an oxymoron, uh, in that respect. But you know, we, yeah, she, she removed me from all the real estate-related committees, removed me from the vice chair uh, role and, and that's fine because at the end of the day, those are her shots to, to make. Uh, those are her calls. We all quote, serve at the pleasure uh, of the, of the administration. It's not going to change the things I'm advocating for, more housing in more neighborhoods, more types of housing.
We need affordable housing.
Yeah, we, we need all housing across the board and, and glad you mentioned that because it's a, it's an important distinction that is not understood in this sort of broader civil, civic discourse around this. Affordable housing is subsidized housing. We used to call it social housing. That's out of vogue now. So you say affordable housing. But it is housing that has a subsidy, that subsidy has to come from somewhere, some level of government. And it really just comes down to a question of what is the uh, level of affordability? What is the timeline that you're locking in that affordability and who's paying for it? So how many hundreds of thousands of dollars of subsidy are we applying on a per-door basis? Is it the feds? Is it the provinces? Is it the city? Is it your fellow homeowner in, in the condo? That is subsidizing your below-market unit? Because when you do that, it obviously makes all the other units of the building more expensive because there's a cost for that. So, but I draw that distinction between housing that people can afford. And that is the supply side of the equation. That is the most important, most effective way that we deal with the housing crisis. And that is why I have just been so uh, assertive in my pursuit of, you know, ending exclusionary zoning. Making sure that we have zoning regulations that actually have a favorable yield, making sure that projects are financially viable. The, the veiled NIMBYism that takes place now amongst my council colleagues, often on the left, by the way. Yeah, who have historically been some of the, the biggest NIMBYs on council here in Toronto are often the lefties. But they, they wrap themselves in this moral.
Just for their award.
Well, they wrap themselves in this moral self-righteous sort of blanket, uh, or a flag. And they will say, well, hey, uh, you know, Marcus, this project's great. But I can't support it because it's only twenty percent affordable. You need to make it fifty percent affordable. And you say, oh geez.
Here's my spreadsheet.
Yeah, I, I literally, I can't get this financed. A bank would never finance this, puts the project underwater. And they say, well, you know, a twenty percent affordable is just not good enough anymore. It's got to be fifty. So if it's not fifty, uh, can't support it and they kill the project. Uh, so it's a poison pill and I always stand up and say, well, you know, what's, what's fifty percent is zero, it's zero. Uh, if the project doesn't go forward, then there's no housing. And there's value in market housing as well.
I think there's a lack of understanding of the multiple variables that go in to making housing affordable.
Right.
And effectiveness of issuing permits and entitlements for properties.
Right.
Would go a long way. I mean, like, I, I mean, this is nothing you've already, that haven't already heard, but you can provide less in the way of subsidy if you can fast-track someone to build something because their cost of capital decreases, the consultants that they're utilizing, bills decrease, like, like it gets cheaper.
If we were to sort of end on a positive or, or something to be optimistic about, the government has been a huge part of the problems that we're facing right now. And so the, the other side of that same coin is government can be part of the solutions. Now, I don't mean a bigger role of government. I mean it the exact opposite, less. But let's remember the third of the cost of a unit of housing in the city of Toronto is taxes and fees.
Yeah.
The development charges have gone up forty-two percent, uh, in the past two years alone, exponential in, increase. And uh, we have used that almost as a general revenue, uh, sort of tool to offset other costs rather than trying to drive for efficiencies and improve performance and get better value for money. Everything is a revenue problem at the city of Toronto, despite having an eighteen point eight billion dollar operating budget. It's always revenue. It's always a revenue problem, Marcus. There's, there's not a lot of effort to drive value for money or get better performance.
Do you think we're going to see DCs drop?
Well, I've certainly been advocating for that and you're looking at other municipalities. Mayor Del Duque and Vaughan showed leadership on that, twenty-five percent reduction. I think Mayor Parrish in Mississauga just teed up fifty percent reduction. I'd like to see a DC, um, waiver of DCs for a two-year term. Uh, put a sunset clause on that and you know, see if we can get some shovels in the ground. This purpose-built rental incentive program, which was a motion I moved last spring, uh, that was the intention of that. A wide, uh, wide-scale exemption of DCs for purpose-built rental for a two-year timeframe. And what ended up happening was the mayor scaled that back, required a stack with the federal program.
Doesn't work.
Yeah, it, it did work. The program's already overcapacity, uh, oversubscribed. And so, and the funny thing about that, we're really in the weeds. I'm not sure if people will follow along on this, but there was a recommendation in that city staff report that said, let's allow this program to apply to our own projects. And that was the first admission that I've ever seen from the city of Toronto acknowledging our own fees are killing our own projects. And that's why we ourselves needed the exemption, uh, from our own taxes and fees. Uh, so I thought that was quite striking, but very in the weeds. Uh, and, and we had like thirty-eight thousand units that were applied for and we awarded it to seven thousand. So that just shows me like there's thirty-eight thousand units that are sitting on the sidelines, available, ready to go if we put this in place, which would be more housing unlocked than, you know, we've ever done in, uh, in a year in the city. And that's the type of size and scale that we're going to need to be able to stand up and deliver if we want to improve affordability housing that people can afford.
Right.
So, yep, taxes and fees, definitely got to do it. Uh, faster timelines, as you said, time is money. You know, up until recently, we've had the slowest approvals uh, of any jurisdiction in North America, three years to get through OPA zoning bylaw amendments. And, and there's a huge cost of, cost of time, uh, and capital to do that. And so these are things that we can improve. But getting ourselves towards a, as of right, uh, a, a situation where the permissions are already there and we just want you to go and build. These smaller scale, missing middle, multiplex projects, now that we've rolled back exclusionary zoning, I think unlocks a new class of investor, somebody who could come forward and, and put capital together with a couple of friends and build the type of rental in neighborhoods that has historically been off limits, that creates more housing supply, more housing options for more people. But also like a nice investment property for somebody as well. And that's like, that's a positive thing. The alternative and the alternative that we have with this administration is like the government needs to do all that. And you know, the idea that the city of Toronto is going to do something faster or for less money than the private sector is ludicrous. And I think any sober person can understand that. So, you know, we, we need to kind of get off that and that's really Mayor Chow and I have a massive departure, uh, in terms of our views on that. And that's not something I can support. And so if she doesn't want me in the vice chair role as a result of that, that's just fine.
Okay, last question for you.
Yeah.
We thought we were going to get tariffed.
Right.
And the big orange man decided no tariffs for thirty days.
Right.
We got thirty days to appease his lordship.
Sure.
The first question, I guess, two-parter. Do you think we're going to see tariffs?
That's above my pay grade, but I think we should be prepared to receive tariffs.
Okay.
And, and I think we haven't been.
What can the city do to help? Like again, we want to create a fertile ground, right? Like we got an opportunity to spin again here. We got so many problems. It's an opportunity. But what can we do to address this, to help Torontonians now?
We need to stand up for, for jobs and support our business community right now. And again, like the mayor came out on Monday and had a press conference in response to the tariffs and she announced a plan to have a plan. She announced a meeting to book more meetings. Uh, and you know, I'm all there for Team Toronto, roll up the sleeves, work together, but I was a little surprised. You know, the president of the United States has been telegraphing this, not even telegraphing, he's been telling us, uh, for months that this is coming. And so I was a little frankly, just surprised that we didn't
He's been telling us for four years.
Yeah, well, fair enough, uh, that, that there was no plan in place and it was a plan to have a plan. And then, you know, big unity moment performative motion at council yesterday saying like, you know, let's all commit to tell the United States that we don't want to be the fifty-first state, like all this nonsense. Like it's nice, it's harmless, but it's not at all helpful. So telling Torontonians to buy local, uh, you already know. The best indication for me that Canadians understand this is when you go into one of our hockey rinks or, or go to Raptors game, the US anthem is being booed right now. That sends a signal to me that Canadians are not stupid and they understand what's going on. They don't need the city of Toronto to tell you, oh geez, Marcus, it's really time to buy local. You're already thinking about that. And we're seeing businesses already make changes to their vendors and supply chains to, to bring in more Canadian content. Uh, because they are doing what you have to do when you're in a business, which is protect your flank. You have to think about these things. It's only government that can be so slow and, uh, and talk about things and timelines of months and years. When you're in business, you got to be faster to react. So what can we actually do? Well, look, the biggest bill that most people get every year is their tax bill. Uh, and I think if we're trying to help businesses weather the storm as their costs go up, as they're impacted by taxes, we should be looking at some tax relief for, you know, industrial manufacturers, for people who actually uh, provide jobs here in the city of Toronto. How can we make them more competitive? How can we provide some financial relief by foregoing revenue on our side? And what can we do to reduce red tape and make Toronto a more attractive place to build a business and invest? You know, we, we have to recognize that if we're not doing as much north-south trading and, uh, and commerce, it's going to be more east-west. Uh, what can we do here in the Canadian, uh, marketplace to
Interprovincial.
Yeah, interprovincial trade, but also like how do we make Toronto a destination for capital and for building a business? Right now, we're not.
Which I feel like we were.
We were.
We really had it.
We were and, and we sort of lost some of the juice there.
And now we have the Canadian peso. So like we should be able to attract more investment.
We should be.
Be able to bring people here.
Cost-effective place to do things. And yet we're not. We're very expensive and a lot of that is government. So even at the city of Toronto, like the idea that we're gonna like tear up all of our contracts and everything and like really stick it to the US. Less than ten percent of our contracts have any US content, uh, to begin with.
That's good.
Yeah, so it, so we're already kind of there. We should work to do more of that. But we're not going to be, you know, sending the shot across the bow to the US, uh, and have them shaking in their boots based on what Toronto city council is doing. But what we can do is provide some cost relief on the things we do control, the property tax. Uh, provide a little bit of those relief for those businesses so that they can keep people employed, keep them working and give them time to, to make those adjustments, uh, so that we can be more competitive.
There really is very little difference financially, economically for us between imposing the tariff or like the hanging sword of Democles over our heads that eventually a tariff is going to drop. Because it eliminates the investment that we want or that we would normally be seeing.
It out.
Like this, when you say, uh, a reprieve for industrial property taxes.
Yeah.
People aren't leasing industrial. They're not taking on more space. They're not adding a line to their factory. They're doing nothing.
Right.
And they're gaming out a situation where they're going to have to move to the United States to access that consumer. That seizes up our economy. So anything we can do to support those businesses, yeah, I'm all for it.
And I think that's, that's what we, the performative feel-good motions where we do a big group hug at city hall.
Useless.
It's nice, but it is kind of useless. So I'm, I'm always very much in the lane of the practical. And, uh, you know, that's why I'll be tabling some stuff, uh, through the budget to try and get the colleagues on board with something that might actually help people other than just feel good. Uh, because feeling good isn't going to be enough when businesses are shuttering and people are losing their jobs.
Yeah. Thanks, man.
Thanks for having me.
This was great.
Good to be with you.
Hope you come back again.
We'll be back. Talk to you next time.
Bye, everybody. Don't forget, do not like or subscribe.